Fire regulations which are on the screen behind me and on the screen facing the public gallery. Could you all please ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent? And councillors, I remind you to speak directly into the microphone and make sure your card is pushed firmly into the console. We move on to the main items of business and the first item is the minutes of our last meeting held on the 13th of March. They've been on the table for 30 minutes. Are you happy that I sign them as a true record? Thank you very much. Amy, apologies for absence.
Thank you Chairman, apologies from Councillors Jeanette and Stuart Stenhouse.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
None before the meeting Chairman.
Any questions by members of the public or from members?
Thank you Chairman, none received.
Jolly good. And I'd ask Patrick if there are any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since our last meeting. Thank you. Performance Against Government Targets came out as an update sheet but if someone would like to address those please.
Thank you Chairman. On your update sheet you'll see the planning services, performance against the government targets on speed and quality and you'll see that we continue to perform excellently. Thank you Chairman.
Jolly good, thank you Beth. So we move on to applications for planning permission and just to note that in the event of site inspections being necessary, which they shouldn't be because we have visited both sites under consideration tonight, but if they should be considered necessary, they will be held on Monday the 10th of June 2019 for those of us that are still with Waverley Borough Council at that time. So the first item we're considering is item A1 which is Planning Reference WA 2019 0131 Barn at Yard Farm Livery Stables, North Breach Lane, Ewhurst. And I would ask Laura to introduce the application please.
Sorry Chair, we're just trying to get it up for you. Thank you Chair. Sorry. This application seeks permission for alterations from stables to an agricultural barn. The application site is located at Barn at Yard Farm, North Breach Lane in Ewhurst. This slide shows the location of the site outlined in red. This shows an aerial photograph of the barn located within the countryside. The next three slides show images of the barn as viewed from North Breach Lane. On the right hand side of the photo is the main barn which is to remain as shown in the picture. And this is the pole barn which is what is proposed to be changed. This slide shows the existing elevations. And this slide shows the proposed elevations. The barn will be closed with softwood tantalised edge boards and a new entrance to the barn will be inserted on the west elevation. This slide shows the existing floor plans which currently measure approximately 900 metres squared. And this slide shows the proposed floor plans highlighting how there's no increase in floor space. The matters for consideration are: impact on visual immunity, the AGLV, and countryside beyond the green belt; impact on residential immunity; impact on highways; and biodiversity and compliance with the Habitat Regulations 2017. For reasons set out in the officer report, the application is recommended for approval. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Now this application is subject to public speaking and I would invite Mike Tapping to speak on behalf of the objectors. Mr Tapping. Good evening. I understand the procedure has been explained to you and you have four minutes from when you start speaking. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for listening. I'm Mike Tapping. I live in Yard Farm. The farm opposite these buildings. We're in a very rural area and you'll appreciate that the farm business on our side of the road relies heavily on a livery, stables and riding in a sand school area and also a bed and breakfast about 10 metres from the buildings. The livery employs several local people directly and many indirectly through the services provided such as farriers. The bed and breakfast relies entirely on people coming from London and around for quiet weekends and we rely on this. The first application recently was for storage and garaging and now I believe that the application is for change to agricultural use. I didn't hear any of that in the summary just now. Agricultural use is a very small area to believe that it truly is agricultural use. The original planning application was for change of usage using permitted development from what was thought to be agricultural use but it was proven to be equestrian. So the aim is now to move it to agricultural and I think that it ought to be thought that it's quite likely that it's moving to agricultural use so that then permitted development can be looked for. So I think we want to be very open minded and clear that it may well be this is a step towards trying to get something else. Now, I have no problems at all with it being used in agricultural use. It is a very agricultural area but I'm just wanting to point out that it may be that other usage in the future could happen. So if it was going to be moved to agricultural use, I would be more than happy particularly if there was constraints put on it that it had to be remained as agricultural because it would be totally in keeping with the area. Finally, a concern is that the applicants, I believe, have a property in the Abingdon area, again ex-agricultural use. Now it's used for developing high-performance cars and there are cars driven up and down tiny roads and these are worked on in the evenings and weekends. And that's what's concerning about the garaging aspect of the usage. And there've been many complaints to council and the police about the noise and usage of this small road in the other site. So although you can't really prove that that's going to happen at this site, I think you want to be very careful about the future usage if this is turned into agricultural usage because the previous applicants from the current owners have been for garaging and I think that the road and the environment would not suit this source of usage. So as I say, in summary, if it was converted to agricultural barns but there was constraint that it remained as agricultural barns, I think that would be very reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Tapping. Now invite Lawrence Simmons to speak in support of the application. Good evening Mr Simmons. Again you have four minutes from when you start speaking.
Chairman, members of the committee. The application is to revert agricultural barns to agricultural bonds. No proposals are submitted for their expansion, only making good of the existing fabric. The barns are clearly farm structures, so as buildings there can be no concerns over the effect on their locality they having been there in this rural setting since their original construction. It's purely a matter of usage. With regard to local concerns, though, the possibility of use for racing car construction or workshops, even though they'll be demolished for housing. This application sets out no such intentions and obviously a council may only assess the content of an application on what is set out in that application. Speculation as to what may or may not happen in future is conjecture void of fact. For everyone's reassurance though, the planning regime is solidly dependable where any such possible future activities might be alleged. The adopted policies of Waverley Local Plan as well as the MPPF, the clear limitations of the GPDO and case law precedent guarantee all due safeguard in planning. Concerns raised over noise will be within the council's capability to control by virtue of adopted plan policies and on grant of permission for example by condition. Traffic will be no greater in level than that normally associated with that serving of farm barn. And given that most of the most viable commercial use for the barns would be secure commercial storage of farm equipment and supplies, especially in view of the current epidemic of theft from farm properties. Parking demand would also be very, very minimal. Significantly Surrey County Council highways have not raised any objections at all. Support for the barns reuse for the purposes applied for is set out in the adopted Waverley Borough Local Plan Economic Development sections and significantly also in the Borough Council's Economic Development Strategy. It states, "The rural areas and economy makes significant contributions to Waverley through diverse range of business types including agriculture." Waverley Borough Council's adopted vision reads, "A successful place where all our rural communities have access to sustainable, high-quality employment." The strategy sets out how this vision will be achieved through six themes of activity by the council and its partners including one, encourage sustainable business and employment growth in both our urban and rural areas. Its economic opportunities commitment underscores this by pledging further support for the rural economy. These are adopted economic strategies of the borough. The barns being reverted to meaningful farm use is without doubt therefore fully supported by already adopted Waverley Borough Council economic strategy. Fact, 32% or 2,900 of Waverley's businesses are based in its rural areas. It is critical to the economic wellbeing of the borough. So against this economic policy and planning background and in the absence of any other meaningful use for the barns, what else can they be used for but agriculture? I therefore hope that committee will support the reuse of these agricultural barns as agricultural barns. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Simmons. Officers, could you just clarify a couple of things for the members please? The change from equestrian to agricultural use is permitted development, is that correct? It's not, it's not?
Yes, that's correct. Just to clarify, the application itself isn't for a change of use. The change from equestrian to agricultural doesn't require planning consent. The application before you is only material because of the external fabric of the barn that is to be altered. So it's actually members should be considering what the barn looks like and if that is appropriate in its context and if that causes any harm, please do not consider the use because that does not require planning consent.
Thank you. And again, am I right in saying that the building would have to have 10 years in agricultural use before it could be considered permitted development for conversion to residential? Thank you. Members. Councillor Henry.
Thank you Chairman. Firstly, I'm very grateful to the chairman and officers and councillors who came out to the site visit. It was a very useful exercise. I believe it gave councillors a useful visual assessment of the site and its environs. Sometimes, particularly myself, I find it quite difficult to read the reports and see the the flat drawings and the photographs that have no attention to detail. So to actually go out and look at the site and park the cars up, it was a useful exercise. I'm very grateful, Chairman and officers. Yes, normally we wouldn't see an application for a change of use from equestrian to agricultural but the change is for the change to the pole barn. The pole barn is a very rustic, traditional barn and it's it's been closed in, as the report says, in wolf tantalised feather edged boards. Page 11, but I think we get the general picture and which officers believe would be in keeping. However, as we've discovered this evening, there is a lot of concern with regard to this change, the threats and the consequences it could have upon the people that live nearby. There's quite a lot of planning history on this and it's quite recent and I think it's important that people do bear in mind that that and it is relevant and not as the report says may not be relevant. I think it's very relevant, that's on pages seven and eight. So the 14 letters of concern, yeah, I really think that that is a concern. As for someone representing the area, I do feel that I've got to put my hand up and speak out for these people. The site is quite unique. It's on quite a small patch of land, 0.2 of a hectare. There's nothing around it. It's farmland but the farmland would not be in the ownership of the the people that want to carry on the agricultural business. The agricultural business, there's nothing in the business, there isn't a business plan, a farming plan and in the design and access statement, there's nothing in there to tell us exactly what's happening in the agricultural activity. And I think it's very important that people know what that could mean because clarity and transparency is the name of the game and if people know what's happening, they won't be frightened and they will support an application like this. Here you have got disused barns. They need to be used for something but we do need to to get to the truth of the matter, exactly what they will be used for. And filling in the barn, I don't think we've got a visual, have we, with the gates on it? Do we have such a visual? No, not, you can't really see how it is in relation to what's there. I find that quite difficult to understand. Okay. But the gates are going to go all the way to the top. I won't bother with the dimensions but if we need those, we can get those at some other time. I'm also a little underwhelmed with the work that has been done with regard to the ecology and that. It's mentioned that it was a walkabout, nothing more than that. And living in the vicinity, I personally know that there's a lot going off there and there's no badgers, there's no mention of the badgers. And that worries me. I think I've probably said enough for now but what I would like to ask of the officers, please. Could we remove the PRD rights from this application? I'll park it there.
Thank you officers. Did you wish to respond to that question? The question was can we remove PD rights from the bill?
Thank you Chair. I think officers don't really feel that it's necessary as set out in the report. It'd have to be in that use for at least 10 years and in any case the unit is too large to be converted under PD. It wouldn't really be reasonable to take away that PD right.
Thank you Marie. Councillor Goodridge.
Thank you Mr Chairman. The site was very useful and so one could see the beauty inverted commas of the barns as they are now. As has been made clear, we are not here to look at a change of use in that it's been agriculture, as I understand it, it's a sort of one-way valve. If you've got agricultural use and you want to use it for equestrian, you've got to get permission to change it to equestrian. But going the other way and particularly going back to what it was before, does not need any permission at all. And therefore parish councils worry that there's a change of use and that's going to be a precursor for new permitted development rights and so on and so forth. I think is probably misguided. As I see it, all we're here for to decide is whether the filling in of the pole barn with the materials as described in our report is acceptable in the location where it is. And I have to say, I think it would be an improvement. And therefore I am happy to go along with the officers' recommendation. It's got big doors as one would expect so big agricultural vehicles can get in and out as you'd expect in an agricultural barn. And no windows, so anybody thinks it's the precursor and suddenly everybody will be living in it. There aren't any windows. The roof is pretty dilapidated anyway, so if it was going to be, you know, we don't have an application before us for residential. That has been given the heave ho by the inspector in no uncertain terms a year or so back. So looking at what this application is for, which is in filling, you know, putting walls on the pole barn in suitable materials in my view, with no change of use at all. I cannot see that any reason to refuse this application, so I shall be going along with the officers' recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you Mr Chairman. I just have some concern over the ecology as Councillor Henry pointed out earlier. The BAT report seems to be extremely scant. It just relies on a visual inspection on the 13th of March and yet we are probably aware that the maximum optimum time for BAT surveys is between April and September and it should be done over several weeks between dawn and dusk and varying times. So I am not very happy that the BAT survey has not been carried out in full to be honest, bearing in mind this is an open building at the moment and the likelihood of there being bats there, there is some potential. I'm also, on page 13 of the officers' report, it says that the down under the paragraph under biodiversity, the final paragraph, that it says that the Surrey Wildlife Trust has approved. Well, I'm reading the Surrey Wildlife Trust letter and all it says is that it provides much useful information for the local authority to be able to assess the potential status of protected and important species on the proposed development site and the likely effect of the development on them. So I do not see that they have approved it. I see that they firmly chucked the ball in our court in order for us to say whether we think it's been adequately covered. And whilst I have no objection per se to the filling in of the barn, I do have concerns that not enough studies have been done on the ecological status, particularly with regards to bats, for this to be approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gray.
Thank you Mr Chairman. I listen to all my colleagues say but I go back a bit more to fundamental units. If someone wants an agricultural unit, then there's usually some need or some evidence that it's part of an agricultural operation. It's not. There's no evidence here that it is. It would give me great concern to allow unfettered agricultural use that could potentially include the hire of equipment, the storing of items for multiple clients, a set of uses that could go way beyond what one would normally expect as agricultural. I think that going back to Councillor Henry's point about PD rights, I have to say that the comments that were made here were not protected for a site in Dunstfold that eventually did actually manage to get approval despite problems with size and elsewhere. So I would certainly think this can't be, it can't have been part of an agricultural unit. We should seek to try and get those permitted development rights excluded from here. So my questions really are, can we condition this to limit the, what I would call the renting, hiring and other activities that could be operated on here and restrict this to what I would consider to be normal agricultural use which is storing grain materials for farm and equipment? If you go in there and you are basically hiring out vehicles to local farms, then you're operating something slightly akin to me away from what would be agricultural. Those are my concerns in terms of what's here. Thank you Mr Chairman.
Thank you Beth. You wish to comment?
Thank you Chairman. I can understand precisely all the concerns raised regarding the agricultural use, the need, justification. To be clear, agricultural use is not development, so that no planning permission is required whatsoever and following on from that, no justification therefore. In terms of the permitted development rights, whilst it's within your gift to restrict them as the decision makers, I would caution you against that for the reasons set out in the report. If the end user were to start renting the building out or renting the machinery within that, we're potentially wandering into the realms of a breach of planning a breach of planning control. However, that would be for investigations. We can't, we can only judge what's before us. What they've come in is for alterations to this barn and that's the decision that you have to make, the impact on the surrounding area through the use of materials. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Beth. Councillor Deaneus.
Thank you Chair. Beth has answered one of my questions, so thank you for that. Just turning, going back to the BAT survey mentioned by Councillor Townsend. I just wondered whether we could condition that a further BAT survey is conducted to the satisfaction of the local authority because I certainly think the points raised are valid. You know, it's no point in doing a survey at the wrong times. It's like doing a traffic survey when schools are closed for the week. So I think that would give me a little bit more confidence in this application if we could have that condition added just to make sure it's correct. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Do you wish to comment Beth?
Thank you Chairman. Only insofar as if it's a pre commencement condition that you're requesting, we will need to seek the agreement of the applicant first. So if members are minded to approve, they may wish to include that within the resolution. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Band.
Thank you Chums. I too found the site visit useful and thank you officers for organising that. I think we are strictly being asked to determine the issue of enclosing the building. Then I think whilst I sympathise with the concerns of people in the locality, I think we have to deal with what's before us. And so from the visual aspect, I'm comfortable with it. I think the points made with the BAT survey are quite sound and I would certainly support seeing an additional condition as a pre commencement condition because I think I do accept that enclosing the building could have a potential impact on bats which might be there. And in light of an inadequate survey, then it does seem to me that should be carried out properly before the enclosure actually starts. So I would be prepared to consider supporting that particular addition as a condition. But otherwise, I think the visual aspects and the materials proposed seem to me totally in line with a rural agricultural type barn. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Gray, you wish to come back?
Thank you Mr Chairman for allowing me to come back. I'm still trying to get my mind round what's being said here. If I read the description here, it's the alterations of stables to agricultural barn. Now, this planning application, and it is a planning application, is seeking it to move from an equestrian to an agricultural barn. The fact is that they don't need to have a planning permission to move it to agricultural. Well, they should go for a change of use or they should basically register that. But we have before us a planning application which says we're moving from equestrian to agricultural. And in that proposal, then they're making alterations to this. And I think the comments and concerns we've raised in terms of conditioning this are very valid and should be considered by this committee. As to the issue of the visual amenity, the visual impacts of this, then I As to the issue of the visual amenity, the visual impacts of this, then I have concerns because I don't know what the use is. I mean, the barn is just being filled in, there's not really a lot of detail on there as to what the use is going to be put to. I'm not sure whether I can query that in planning terms, so I will make my assessment on what I think this looks like, and what I think the appropriateness of it is. But I would go back on those questions of conditions. This application is doing two things. One is recording the fact it's going to agriculture, and the second is seeking permission to make changes. Is that the case or not?
Patrick, would you like to clarify? Yes. Just to reiterate, this is not an application for a change of use, it's purely a description to assist in why the alterations are being made. It is not a change-of-use application. The change from equestrian to agricultural does not require planning consent in its own, it is purely for the look of the barn. In terms of, as Beth has alluded to, if any use outside of that permitted within agricultural use takes place in the future, there is adequate recourse available within the planning system to take that action, and we are satisfied that that would occur, given the neighbours' interest, obviously. So, I think that's all I can say, and I think, as I said earlier, members are asked to consider the look of the barn, whether that is appropriate in its context.
Thank you, Patrick. So, just to be clear, the applicants could tomorrow start using these buildings as agricultural buildings without any planning permission, and they could use them for any of the various uses included under agricultural use under the planning laws. councillor Voracewski.
Thank you, Chairman. That was very eloquently explained and necessary, because I think we're getting the wrong end of the stick here and making a mountain out of a molehill. Whilst I have great sympathy with what's been said and some of the comments made before us, this application is very straightforward and simple in what it's asking for. It's not our job here as councillors to justify what may or may not happen, there's no justification in that. I think it's simple, it's straightforward. I do, however, agree with what councillor Townsend said about the bat surveys, more work should be undertaken to do that, and I would support a pre-commencement on that. But I think we're here tonight to make a decision about what is a material change and an infill rather than a change of use, because that has already been established. It's a waste of our time sitting here discussing something that we have no control over in any way, shape or form. So, the officers have my full recommendation, but I would like to see a pre-commencement based on what councillor Townsend put forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Officers, would you just like to explain the mechanics of getting the applicant's permission to include a pre-commencement condition?
Thank you, Chairman. It would simply just be a matter of written agreement, setting out the condition, asking them whether or not they agree.
So, if we chose to, we could approve this application subject to them agreeing to the pre-commencement condition?
Yes, correct, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Townsend, do you wish to come back?
You've partly answered it, thank you, Chairman. It was just really the status of a condition for the bat survey, and whether or not it can be conditioned rather than deferred and has to be provided upfront. So, I'm quite happy then that it can be added as a condition. The officers are nodding their heads, so I'm taking that as a yes. Thank you.
Members, before we move to the recommendation, are you happy to include an additional condition regarding the bat survey? Thank you. So, we move to the recommendation that subjects to conditions one to three, and additional condition regarding pre-commencement bat survey, and informative one, permission be granted. All those in favour, please?
Nine.
And against?
Two.
Abstentions, if any? No, that's a lot. Right. Thank you. So, we move on to the second application to consider this evening. I don't know if anybody in the public gallery wishes to leave. Feel free if you do. So, item A2 is application reference WA oblique 2019, oblique 0080, and the site address is 22 Lashmere, Cranley, GU68NA, and the proposal is for the erection of an attached dwelling and associated access along with extension to existing dwelling following demolition of existing single extension and garage. And Kate is going to introduce the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Here we can see an aerial view of the site, with the site under the red pin here, number 22 Lashmere. As you can see, Lashmere is accessed off the Elmbridge Road, which is, as you know, one of the key routes into Cranley. Here we can see a proposed site plan. The existing dwelling is this area here, and it's proposed that that would be extended. An existing single-storey side extension would be demolished, and a new dwelling put up in its place. You can see to the forecourt here, four parking spaces would be provided, two to serve each dwelling, both the existing and the proposed. And you can also see on this plan, which is amended since the one which is included in the agenda, to include the visibility splats, which are just visible to the side of the parking spaces here and here. And also, the members who are on the site visit would note there was some discussion about what they were doing in relation to the dropped curb. I can confirm after discussions with both Surrey highways officers and the applicant that they are proposing to extend the dropped curb over this area here, so in front of the existing dwelling for the full width. And you can also see on this plan that they are proposing a side access along the proposed dwelling and to the rear of the proposed dwelling to allow access to the rear garden of the existing property, number 22. And moving now to photographs of the site, you can see the existing dwelling here. Here is the proposed single-storey, sorry, the side extension which is proposed to be demolished. And this is a view of the opposite side of the street, and within the garden area itself. And looking over towards number 22, you can see that there's an attached garage which immediately adjoins to the opposite side of the boundary. And moving now to look at the elevations, you can, I apologise, so a little bit fuzzy on my screen, but this is the existing dwelling which is retained, much as per the existing, although with the porch removed and replaced with a smaller porch and the side extension removed. And here is the proposed dwelling which would mirror the Eaves line of the existing, and would mirror the roof form which is a typical feature in this street with the half-hip, half-gable form. And now we can see the proposed ground floor plans. This area here is the proposed extension to the existing dwelling, which would be two stories. It's coming out by, I believe it's 4.3 metres. They are proposing a side window within that extension to serve a kitchen area, but it is recommended that that window is obscure glazed because the boundary is relatively low to that side. And here we can see the proposed dwelling, which, as outlined in the report, complies in full with the requirements of the nationally described space standards. And so, the matters for consideration are the impact of the proposal on the visual amenity, the impact on residential amenity, the suitability of living conditions provided for future occupiers, transportation considerations, flooding considerations, and the biodiversity and compliance with the habitat regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Again, we have public speaking, and I would invite Emily Joy to speak on behalf of the objectors. You have four minutes from when you start speaking.
I speak on behalf of residents objecting to this application, the local opposition to which is overwhelmingly demonstrated in the numerous letters reporting the significant harm inflicted on Lashmere residents. Contrary to the case officer report, we argue that the negative ramifications of the design outweigh any plausible benefits. The proposed 4.3 rear extension reaches the maximum limit allowed by technical guidelines, creating a destructively overbearing design resulting in an unacceptable lack of privacy, sunlight and enjoyment of amenity space for neighbouring 21 and 23 Lashmere. A ground floor window on the western wall of the central dwelling would directly overlook 21. Even obscured, this window significantly compromises privacy in such close proximity. The design would also unquestionably limit any future extension of 21, even in the most minimal and collaborative of designs. The case officer also reports that the property must meet the needs of the users as a sustainable development. The proposal does not achieve this. Even with a substantial extension, the interior spaces only just reach minimum requirements, and the garden amenity space is critically inadequate due to the plot subdivision and extension itself. This lack of sustainable design is exacerbated by the proposed rear bin storage for the central dwelling, thus requiring bins to be dragged along the length of the garden, rear of the two properties and the side of the plot before reaching the front. This irresponsible design directly contradicts waste management instructions, additionally creating a property that could not be inhabited by a resident with mobility issues. The unsuitable design therefore not only adversely damages the privacy and amenity space of neighbours, but also the two proposed dwellings themselves. The proposal seeks to create terrace housing, which the case officer admits there are no other examples of on the street. The terracing would devastate the street scene and create a lack of privacy afforded to the current 14 pairs of semi-detached dwellings. This is further contrived by the proposed porch designs differing to one another and that of 21. This directly conflicts with planning guidelines and is entirely out of character with the matching designs of all other pairs of dwellings. The proposal consequently demonstrates an inappropriate departure from street character, unnecessarily harming the visual amenity of Lashmere. The subdivision of the plot requires 2.5 more parking spaces than if it remained a semi-detached dwelling. The case officer has reported that despite missing the full allocation for these spaces, the proposal would not increase street parking pressures. This is inaccurate. With the narrow street already at full parking capacity, this puts undeniable pressure on parking, access and traffic flow of the street, further heightened by visitors to the properties and vehicle access during construction, creating significant and lasting harm to all residents for the future. Ultimately, the case officer has mistakenly considered each detrimental factor of design too independently. No tangible benefits beyond the monetary gain of the owners are apparent. Instead, the harmful design causes significant loss of neighbour privacy, light and enjoyment of amenity space, increase in noise and smell disturbance, overbearing and unsustainable development, severe resident parking access and traffic disruption, harm to the overall visual amenity of the street, not to mention the numerous recognised mistakes in the application and the complete failure to communicate with neighbours. The proposal's overall harm to Lashmere residents significantly outweighs any potential benefit.
You may sum up if it's very brief.
Okay. I was just to say, we urge you to refuse this unnecessary and damaging proposal.
Thank you. I now invite councillor James Betts of the Cranley Parish Council to speak. Good evening, Mr Betts.
James Betts, representing Cranley Parish Council. The parish council objects to the proposal and disagrees with the officer's report and recommendations on the following points. Visual and residential amenity. The officer notes the proposal is at the maximum permissible size to maintain amenity. With this, we disagree. The proposal's size and scale with minimal elements of subservience will result in a loss of amenity to properties 21 and 23 by way of overbearing and overdominance. The proposal barely maintains the 45-degree sightlines at neighbouring habitable windows and is poorly designed. Each adjacent neighbour will be faced with new unbroken rear wood projecting two-story brickwork which, at its closest point, will sit 1.2 metres from the boundary, extending unbroken by any feature for a distance of 10 metres alongside the boundary of 21 Lashmere. The rear extension of number 22 includes downstairs kitchen window, which the officer proposes be conditioned as obscure glazed only. This new window will face directly toward the rear garden of number 21, will be openable and will lead to a loss of privacy by way of overlooking. The proposed addition of a new dwelling and subdivision of the plot will result in number 22 losing independent access to the rear garden area. It is proposed that number 22 and 22 plot one share a rear access pathway, which the officer notes will require conditioning to provide a legal agreement and right-of-way in perpetuity to prevent dispute. In our opinion, this is a further example of the proposal's poor design and further evidence of loss of amenity to number 21 which is adjacent to the proposed shared access route. Parking. To meet minimum parking standards, the proposal is required to provide a total of five parking spaces. Only four parking spaces are proposed, which the officer notes is below the minimum required. The proposed new dwelling provides a five-bed person occupancy but provides for only two car parking spaces. Almost all of the objections received cite the lack of parking and issues with on-street parking within Lashmere Close, which is a cul-de-sac as a serious concern. It is our opinion that the proposal should be required to meet the minimum standards of parking provision. It can reasonably be assumed that a new five-bed person occupancy dwelling at this location without provision for minimum parking standards can only exacerbate the parking issues within the immediate development and further affect residential amenity. With regard to terracing, a number of objections relate to the proposed new dwelling as being out of character, incongruous and not in keeping with the local development, which consists primarily of semi-detached properties. We support this view and believe the proposed new dwelling represents an overdevelopment of the site, will create a terrace effect within the street scene and set an unwanted precedent for future development in Lashmere Close. With regard to flooding, a number of objections have been raised to the proposal on the basis of flood risk at the site. The officer notes that flood risk exists and has proposed a condition to deal with the effects of flooding events at the proposal location. It is our opinion that the proposed development will only increase the likelihood and exacerbate the impact of flooding events within the immediate development. Conditioning the proposal to make structures more resilient to flood events will not in itself ameliorate the effect of the proposal on the likelihood that such events may in future be more severe by virtue of the development itself. To summarise, the proposal represents a contrived, poorly designed and speculative application which has produced significant levels of opposition from the residents of Lashmere Close. It is clear from the officer's report that the proposal seeks maximal gain and as such requires significant levels of conditioning to control the resultant harm to residential amenity. Although the officer sought to provide reasoned argument in support of the proposal, it is the opinion of Cranley Parish Council that a proposal that requires such levels of conditioning or post-grant control to render the application permissible clearly shows the proposal does not of itself contain sufficient merit or benefit to outweigh the harm caused and should therefore be refused.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I apologise that I wasn't able to go on the site visit. However, this is an area that I know quite well, and I have taken the opportunity since the site visit took place to actually visit this particular position. I have to say that I totally support the views of the parish council. I have a great deal of respect for their investigation into this, and I also support the views of the representative of the residents in the area. I think this would be creating a terracing effect which is out of character with the existing properties in the road. There would be a loss of privacy and amenity to the existing residents, the loss of trees, hedges and verges. And I think the design is out of character, it's overbearing in terms of its size. There is a very significant problem with parking. There is a very significant problem with parking in Lashmere. It exists already, and I do believe that despite the amended parking layout that has been received, that the lack of parking spaces being provided for these two properties will actually make the situation for the residents of Lashmere, which as has been pointed out is a cul-de-sac, will exacerbate an existing problem. I do also think that for people who live in the immediate area, we do recognise that the access from Lashmere on to the Elmbridge Road is quite difficult, and it is at a potentially difficult spot, and that additional cars relating to the proposed property could make this situation worse. We also, living locally, are aware of surface water flooding, and I think overall, taking everything into account associated with this proposal, I would say that the proposed development is inappropriate in the area, and I could not support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I agree wholeheartedly with councillor Ellis and also with the parish council. There's been a significant number of objections logged against this application, and thank you for everyone for going on the site visit. I think you'd find Lashmere does have a unique character. It's got semi-detached houses, they are not deep houses, but they do tend to have wide frontages, and they're fronted also by grass verges. The grass verges have been protected in the road, and they've got some logs and rocks and things. So people obviously take care of the grass verges and do protect them. The parking on this road, as has been said, is a problem. There is no possibility of having really any more on-street parking. And if you look at that picture there, you will see that actually the visibility displays rely on the cars on Plot One being parked very close together. And as you can see on Plot Two, on the second one, the existing house, they are parked nicely with a bit of distance between them. I don't think the parking is adequate, and I think actually by not having an additional space between those two houses, it will create problems on the road and lead to parking on the grass verges. The impact on the street scene has already been highlighted. It will create a dominant effect, and it won't only affect the houses either side of this particular plot, it will also affect the houses opposite as well, because as has been said, it is a narrow road. It also sets a dangerous precedent in this road, introducing a terrace of houses which would have a really big harm and impact on the existing character of Lashmere itself. We can refuse this application. We have refused applications within Cranley before for infill, and there was a recent one on the Uherst Road which went to appeal, and it lost on appeal as well due to the conflict with policy TD1. I would remind that the TD1, certain aspects have been picked out, but TD1 says the council will ensure that the character and amenity of the borough are protected, and I don't think that this is protecting the character of this particular cul-de-sac. We talk about place shaping, we bang on about place shaping, and we talk about the fact that, you know, recently in this council chamber, on the 20th of March, we allocated money to Farnham, I don't object to that at all, for place shaping. However, place shaping is not a singular activity, it is an ongoing event, and every single planning application we put through has an effect on the place in which we approve it. Lashmere is a small cul-de-sac, introducing terracing is not appropriate within Lashmere itself. It is quite unique, actually, 1930s architecture, and it actually is a very, very pleasant place to live. If you introduce terracing, you will find it very, very difficult to refuse subsequent applications. We are nibbling away in this infill development, we are nibbling away gradually at the existing character areas of Cranley. We have already delivered nearly 1,700 houses, I think we've only got about 80 to go before 2032, and we have over-delivered on windfall as well. I do not see why there is a need to try and change the character of Lashmere at this particular point when we can actually refuse this application due to the harm on the character of this area. I think also that if we go to the slide that says proposed elevation as well, just quickly, because I know I've probably had quite a bit of my time, that... You will see that it doesn't show the garage next door to Plot One and the adjacent house. If you look at the actual pictures, you will see that there is actually something right next to the boundary there. So the impact on Plot One will have a significant impact on the house next door. Thank you very much, that's all I've got to say for now.
Thank you. Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I thought the site visit was very helpful, and fortunately I could park the car during the site visit, but I think by the time most of us had arrived, it was getting a bit tricky. I have to say that I thought the cul-de-sac was a charming bit of architecture, the whole cul-de-sac I found to be very interesting, very nice place to live, lots of hedges, lots of grass verges, and buildings that all matched in very nicely together. And I think I counted three different styles of house, or styles of semi-detached. You see, that proposed elevation also doesn't show the chimney, which is a charming feature, I think, of the semi-detached. They have a large chimney on the single-storey extension, from memory, so if we could look at the photographs of the front elevation. Oh, the chimney, yes, well, there's a chimney right on the edge, and that chimney on the right, I assume, disappears, but there will be still the chimney on the left, which I don't think was on the visual of what it visually looked like. But it just seems to me there is a large amount of hedge, which is typical of that side of the road in particular, with a very nice matching pair of semi-detached houses that I've... And what's going to happen is you're going to lose the chimney on the right, the porch on the right is going to be shrunk, so you can get the cars in, and I think it would be detrimental to the character of the cul-de-sac, I have to say. And I agree with my colleagues also on... I mean, when I came to this meeting, myself, I was sort of sitting on the fence slightly. I wasn't totally happy and I wasn't totally against, but having listened to my Cranley colleagues, I have to say I am feeling that they are right on the points that they make. And so unless I hear other things, I am minded not to go with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Bless you. Bless you again. Councillor Dinas.
Thank you. I'll keep this brief because I actually agree with the comments now made by the three previous speakers, and I totally agree with what they've said. To me, if it's required five car parking, and we say four's okay, when will we say three's okay? And I know the area very well, you try and park in the evening or on a weekend when people aren't at work, it is a nightmare, and I think this will make it worse. I think councillor Betts from Cranley explained the position very well and very eloquently. Just a couple of clarification points. Page 21, County Highway Authority, it says highway comments on the amended plans which will be made available prior to the committee. I couldn't find, and if it's my mistake, what those comments were. And from that point, when you look at Condition 1, it doesn't mention SK13, which is the amended plan. So we would need to amend that condition anyway because of the amended plans. Go back to page 21, Southern Water returns saying it wasn't within their statutory area. Again, I can't find anything from Thames Water. It certainly isn't on the update sheet, so I'm a little bit mystified what they said. I agree with... Someone mentioned on page 30, or mentioned about the benefits outweighs the benefits. Well, I can't really see what those benefits are, if I'm absolutely honest. Condition 11, I just think probably needs to be clarified as well. The water use within the new dwelling shall not exceed... I'm taking it means 110 litres per head per day? I don't know, but you've got 110 something, which I'm taking that's probably supposed to say litres. Again, I think that probably just needs to be clarified. Just to end on a positive after all of that, page 25, the suitability of living conditions. Many, many meetings, we've sort of asked for it to be put in a nice, easy table to look at that. I just want to thank the officers for doing that. It does make it quite easy, rather than looking at plans, trying to measure it, and trying to work it out yourself. So the positive on this one is thank you on that, but I have to say I tended to agree with my colleagues so far that I think this is inappropriate. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Wrojewski. Sorry, Kate, did you wish to comment before we move on?
Yes, if that's okay, Chairman, I could just clarify on those issues. Apologies that I haven't provided you with an update in relation to a few of those matters you raised. In relation to the plan as proposed, there is an additional plan, SK13, which would need to be referenced on any decision notice. In relation to the comments from the Highways Authority, they've raised no objection to the proposal now. They requested that it was amended to incorporate the visibility displays, but had no objection to the principle of there being four spaces or the principle of extending the drop curve over the full width of the property. In relation to Condition 11 with regards to the water usage, you're correct, that should be litres, and that can be clarified on any decision notice. In relation to the comments from Southern Water, there's not a statutory requirement to consult them, and I understand that Thames Water receive our list of applications and in effect pull out the applications where they have concerns regarding them, and that wasn't the case here. And I know you referred to as well on page 25, weighing up the benefits of the proposal against the harm, again, in relation to this application as the provision of a new housing unit, it is the provision of accommodation within the borough. And I believe that covers off everything, but if there's anything further, then please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Councillor Wrojewski.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, it's all been said, hasn't it? And I'm grateful to councillor Goodrich for demonstrating that listening to local knowledge is very, very important, because as residents, and I don't live too far from this place, we do know what the area like and the impact on the local amenity is. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go to the site visit, but I know the area very well, and I took the opportunity to go there and familiarise myself earlier on today, so I'm very well aware of exactly where we're talking about. I would strongly argue, I think councillor Dinas has pointed out, I would strongly argue with the conclusion on page 30 by the officer's recommendation that the benefits, I fail to see where any of these are. This is actually, is a really, really lovely spot. You know, you're not far from the Downs Link, you're on it in fact, you've got fields behind you, you've got a lovely play area, and it's very family orientated and it retains some of our natural heritage that I think we should really fight to preserve. I'll agree, it's modest by comparison in other applications that we've approved in Cranley. But having said that, if we look exactly where it is, exiting on to the Elmbridge Road over a signal-controlled one-way bridge in conjunction with the many hundreds and thousands of other vehicle movements, if we look at the cumulative effect from other applications that have been imposed upon Cranley, this small dwelling might not impact what we think, but cumulatively, I think it will. I actually feel extremely strongly, given that Cranley Parish Council has worked really hard to produce and is almost there with its neighbourhood plan, we took our lion's share of the housing. I think we now should do everything in our power to fight and preserve what we have left of the character and amenity of our village and retain it for future generations to enjoy. So I strongly oppose the officer's recommendation and strongly suggest that we find a recommendation that doesn't approve this application, because it does set a precedence, and I think, as I said, I'll reiterate the point, given everything that's happened to Cranley over the past few years, I think we should fight strongly to preserve what we have and maintain it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I won't go over what my colleagues have gone through very much, but I would like to thank the two objectors for giving their responses, especially representing the local residents. I think that was an extremely good and eloquent summary. We do have a number of streets like this in the rural areas. I mean, it is a type, it's very pleasant, it's very uniform, and there have been a number of good examples of extensions that have been made within the street, but it's kept its character. And I think we have a responsibility to those residents not to set a precedence here that I think we would certainly come to regret, and it certainly wouldn't be honouring our obligation to the residents to keep this overdevelopment and keep it out of the approval thing. I can't agree with the officers in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Are you happy for me to move to the recommendations? Oh, councillor...
Thank you for everybody for all their comments, and the site visit was extremely useful, and thank you for councillor Townsend for explaining to us that it's a 1930s. We were looking, many of us looking at the street and thinking, well, is it the 40s, or is it 30s, or whatever? And you said it's 30s, it certainly looked like that to me and reminded me of homes where my mother and family moved into in the 30s in South London. But I think it will destroy the visual amenity of the street, it will spoil the whole place. I have an objection actually to the calling this an extension. I don't know how better to describe it, but it's an integral part of the original building. If you look along that street, all houses of this, or pairs of semis of this design, and there were two different designs, all the houses had this element at the side, and the chairman peered through the little back window of the side building, and it clearly was and still is a scullery, actually. I'm sure lots of the other ones have been converted into full-blown kitchens or whatever, I don't know, but it is not an extension, it's part of the original building, and it should be maintained in that way, and I fully support the idea of refusing the application.
Thank you, councillor Byram. I tend to agree, but we will move to the recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 12 with amendments to conditions number one being the drawing numbers eight, nine, and 11 as set out on the update sheet, as well as informative one and additional informative two on the update sheet. Permission be granted. All those in favour, please?
None.
And those against?
That's unanimous, Chair.
Thank you, members. May I have a proposition for refusal in a second? Councillor Townsend, you would like to propose?
Can I propose that it conflicts with policy TD1 of the...
Can you just propose the refusal first?
Sorry, can I propose the refusal? Sorry, Chairman.
Yes, and councillor Dinas to second. And now we'll come to your list of reasons for refusal, which we will consult the officers about half.
Absolutely, and I expect they will be able to add to them as well. Initially, can I say that it conflicts with policy TD1 of the adopted Waverley Local Plan Part One, and policies D1 and D4 of the Local Plan 2002, as well as the National Planning Policy Framework, all of which seek a high standard of design which respects the local context.
Thank you. Anybody else, anything to add to those reasons? Officers, your comments, please.
I would suggest the following reasons for refusal. Reason one, the proposed development is considered overdevelopment of the site and not in keeping with the character and appearance of the street. It will give rise to added pressure for on-street parking, which will impact negatively on the visual amenity of the area, contrary to policy D1 and D4 of Local Plan 2002, and TD1 of LPP1, and the MPPF 2019. Reason two, the development will impact on the amenity of adjoining residents, contrary to policy TP1. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So, members, proposed by councillor Townsend, seconded by councillor Dinas, and for the reasons just outlined, all those in favour of refusing this application?
Just to remind members that in our December meeting when we discussed the Abbotney Hall, we did request that officers went back to the Abbotney Hall Committee setting out some helpers to what might be permitted. I know that's not, nothing's been written yet, I have now learnt that actually communication has been made between the planning officer and the Abbotney Hall Committee and that I understand that things are in hand to arrange a meeting between the various parties. So there is some progress and I look forward to the committee in the next council making sure that this goes through to some proper conclusion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Band. Members, councillor Band was anxious that this didn't slip under the net as he will no longer be with us as a councillor in the future and indeed the same applies to my learned colleague on my left and I shall miss both of your wise counsel and thank you both for all your efforts for Waverley Borough Council over many years. Thank you.